Then I pledge the pledge of allegiance to the flag and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Next item on the agenda is recognitions and acknowledgements. The first is the recognition of the new Board of Education Student Representative and Dr. Hill and Mr. Parker.
Thank you, President Fury. I'm going to call Mr. Parker to the microphone to introduce our new student representative.
Good evening. All right. So tonight I get the pleasure of representing our Semester Two Board of Ed rep for Windsor High School, Tristan Davis. So Mr. Davis was born and raised here in Windsor. And his first love has always been music. Tristan began his musical adventures at the age of three with various instruments and then on to the violin at age six before transferring to the trumpet from at age eight. From there, at age 14, Tristan committed himself to the trumpet and has been playing creative, playing and creating music ever since. So both in and beyond the walls of Windsor High School, his trumpet talents have garnered several accolades while showcasing his talents across the state of Connecticut. But in addition to music, Tristan has proven to be a solid and consistent student, role model, and leader. But what stands out most about him is his work ethic and the pride he takes in doing all he undertakes at the highest level. Tristan has been involved in leadership activities since he first stepped onto our high school campus. He is a student advisory leader, leading social emotional wellness during our connections block, and that's to our Windsor High School underclassmen. He has committed four years to our Air Force JROTC program and currently serves as the Operation Squadron Commander. He has over 170 community hours just with JROTC alone. He is a four-year member of the Jazz Ensemble and Symphonic Band, taking leadership roles in his junior and this senior year. In the spare time, Tristan specializes in jujitsu, organizational activities, loves community service, and is a part of various social justice clubs around the state and participates in, and I think I'm supposed to say this with great emphasis, Greater Hartford Alumni Chapter Capa League as the new vice president. He told me that. Tristan is a huge advocate for mental health within the lives of teens and the student voice and is always looking for ways to improve the lives of others. In the fall, Tristan will be undertaking a dual major in music education and jazz studies in hopes to attend either Hampton University or Western Connecticut State University for his studies. Wherever he lands, I can say that it makes me very proud to witness this tale of the classic sitcom freshman having trouble with his locker and running a class as to not be late and to the young man and school leader that we have before you this evening. And I am quite certain this story is just getting started. Members of the board, I present to you Tristan Davis.
You're welcome. Officially welcome. Congratulations, welcome. I'm ready. Next item on the agenda is Item 2B, recognition. There's a CAPE recognition tonight. And we have with us Mr. Donald Harris, immediate past president of the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. CAPE is here this evening to present the Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence to Ms. Gianna Gill. Mr. Harris is also Chair of the Bloomfield Board of Education, just kind of down the road a piece, as well as being on the State Board of Education, former principal of Bloomfield High School, former deputy mayor, and I could go on and on, but...
That's okay.
One thing Nathan and I always will remember is stay in your lane. Mr. Harris.
That's my mantra. Before I began, I would just want to extend my congratulations to Tristan. It's always wonderful to have student reps sit on your board. And I had, as I heard the gentleman speak, you're going to Hampton University. So I know under whose influence that came about. Because that music teacher that I'm thinking about, who has a son there at Hampton, is also a former student of mine at Bloomfield High. So I know Tracy well. Congratulations to you, young man. I have a granddaughter who just graduated from Hampton last May. A terrific school. You're going to have a great education down there. Good evening, Superintendent Terrell Hill and members of the Windsor Board of Education. Again, my name is Don Harris. I am your next door neighbor. And I'm here on behalf of CAPE to recognize the efforts of the Windsor Public Schools and to present you with two awards tonight. CAPE has been honoring school districts with the Award of Excellence for Educational Communications since 1975. In 2016, the award was renamed in honor of longtime CAPE staff member Bonnie B. Carney in recognition of her 47 years of dedication to education focused on communications. In order to receive this Bonnie B. Carney Award of Excellence for Educational Communications, entries must meet all of the following criteria. First is the general criteria, which includes clarity of message, image, and consistency. Second, the specific guidelines of readability, editing, graphics, type, format, presentation, design, and value of expenditure. I am so very happy to extend to my friends here in Windsor these awards for excellence for educational communication. The first one is in social media, and the second one is for your website. Congratulations.
She got two.
Okay, on the count of three. One, two, three. Again, another one. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much.
You gotta take one with her family.
With their family. Okay, on the count of three. One, two, three. We'll do another one. Three. Okay. Thank you.
In a second, yeah. We now know, we can't blame Gianna, who's just gotten those awards for excellence regarding communications if the picture doesn't come out. We know she didn't take the picture. Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to add an agenda item.
Okay.
I move that we add for agenda item 2C, a recognition recognizing Paul J. Panos.
I'll second that motion. Okay, to add an item to the agenda, we need, I believe, a two-thirds vote.
That's correct.
I don't think there's any need for a discussion here. So all those in favor, all those in favor of adding this agenda item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Motion carries...
What did you vote?
Uh-oh.
Did you vote, Jill? We can't hear you.
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero zero.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The Board of Education would like to recognize Board of Education Minority Leader Paul Panos, who has many years of service to the Windsor Board of Education, Windsor Public Schools, and the Town of Windsor. Mr. Panos is a retired engineer who worked as a power plant boiler designer and an engineering company in Windsor. Originally from Lewiston, Maine, he is a graduate of the University of Maine, majoring in engineering physics, class of 1966. He also has a master's degrees in economics from the University of Connecticut. Mr. Panos served in the Army as an enlisted man from 1966 to 1969. He is married to his wife Denise. They have three children, all who went through Windsor Public School System. Paul, as a small token of our appreciation, please accept this crystal bowl engraved as follows: "To honor your service to the Board of Education for over 20 years of service and dedication to the Windsor Board of Education and the family of Windsor Public Schools, Paul J. Panos." Mr. Panos, on behalf of the Board, we congratulate you, sir. David.
This looks very suspicious.
Yeah, it was. So just...
Hit him, have one. I'm like, really? They give them all that for our candidate? Congratulations. You want me to read it?
Thank you. Congratulations.
I'll read it afterwards. I'll read this one. What would you like to read?
Where would we be? Where would you be except here?
I think he wants a selfie.
Do you want to read it? Do you want to...
Sure.
That's why we didn't have it.
He is human. Thank you for coming out. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Don, thank you. Thank you for coming.
You're the crazy man of the Board of Ed all these years. He got one on the council, too. He didn't know.
Thank you very much, both.
You're more deserving.
We're going to actually take a step back because even though there was two pieces of hardware that Ms. Gill just received, there we have another token of our appreciation from the Board. That was from CAPE. And so I'd like to read the following here. "Board of Education would like to recognize Gianna Gill, District Communications Coordinator, for all her efforts for sharing news of our district to our students, families, community members, and other stakeholders. Ms. Gill began her role in January 2022, her responsibilities including, include maintaining communication software applications, management of the district website and social media platforms. She works with with media personnel and our community partners on the distribution of media advisories, press releases, brochures, and other materials used to communicate with families, students, and staff. Most recently, she started producing Dr. Hill's Chat and Chill with Superintendent Hill. She's a graduate of Syracuse University and the University of Hartford. Previously, she worked with the New York Giants as an HR benefits generalist, a program developer at the Wilson Gray YMCA Civic Leadership High School, and as a family resource coordinator for Windsor Public Schools. Gianna, as a small token of our appreciation, please accept this clock engraved as follows: "In appreciation of your appreciation of your commitment to excellent district communications for Windsor Public Schools and the Windsor Board of Education 2022/2023." Congratulations.
Can Sally get another crack?
Okay. Can you take that?
Yeah.
I'll take that. I'll take that back, David. I think she wants another picture.
With the Q.
Yep.
On the count of three. One, two, three. Take another one. One, two, three. Okay.
Here you are.
Next item on the agenda is Audience to Visitor. Alexis, if you could read your script.
Good evening. This is Alexis Shaq from the Superintendent's Office. If there's anyone from the public who would like to address the Board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar, or you may raise your hand on your computer if your device has a microphone by selecting the participants icon on the Zoom menu bar and then clicking Raise Hand or by dialing star nine on your phone. You will be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you will be promoted to panelist. After you make your comments, you will return to attendee status. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you. And for folks here in the boardroom and if you're on Zoom, at the two and a half minute mark, Vice President Lockhart will hold up a red card briefly. And at the three minute mark, he'll hold it up and keep it up. That means wind up your remarks. If you're on a telephone call, obviously you can't see a card, Mr. Lockhart will interrupt at the three minute mark to let you know you have to wind up. I'd like to take first, anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the Board tonight.
Good evening, guys. I am a member from the robotics program in town.
Do you want to state your name and put your address there?
My name is Lenia Carroll. I just wanted to thank you guys for all your continued support for our team. I know this year was another great year for us. We actually, at our event here in Windsor, we, our team was in second place overall, which was really good for the team. We just want to thank you guys. Like, it's great support between the bosses to our events, the last two, couple events that we went to, supporting us through the event. I just want to thank you guys. Like, this is great to see for these kids. Like, I know that our kids felt so great. And I know this year, Mr. Fury knows this, it was a tough year for our, our team because one of our local teams lost a very good member of the team. So it's, it was a nice year to see this year happen.
Thank you. Anyone else in the boardroom like to address the Board? Seeing none. Is there anybody online?
Mr. President, there are no individuals with their hand raised, and there are no questions in the Q and A feature.
Thank you. Without objection, we'll close Audience to Visitor. Audience to Visitor is closed. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Are there anything that needs to be pulled and before a motion is made? I'm going to pull the financial report. Okay. Is there a motion?
Move. The Board of Education approved Consent Agenda Items 4B, Enrollment Report, 4C, Food Service Report, and 4D, Human Resources Report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries seven zero zero. Is there another motion, Mr. Lockhart?
Move the Board of Education approved Consent Agenda Item 4A, Financial Report.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. And Mr. Panos, you were the one who requested it to be pulled, so start with you.
Yeah, I wonder if the bachelor could explain the red marks. You have two of them, one on magnet school tuition. We're under, we're over budget by 21 percent. We have special ed tutor salaries. We're, we're over budget by 8 percent. And is there any idea how this is going to progress through the rest of the year? Could you explain them? Thank you.
So the magnet school tuition line item will stay, that's the total amount that we are paying this year, the 1.7 million. All of our bills have come in already. So we are over 300,000, like I've explained during the budget process, that we would be over this year. And the reason why we put money in for next year, increase that line item. I just want to take a quick minute to just say that we have less kids this year than last year, but we're paying over 300,000 more in costs, and we have less kids. So... And then the second one is our special ed tutor salary. As you've heard from Christina Wykowski a few times this year, so far, we have been struggling finding special ed certified staff, teachers, social workers throughout this school year. So in order to help...
Implement service hours.
Thank you, thank you. Implement service hours, we utilize special ed tutors when we can. So that's why that line item is 22,000 to the negative, and that will increase as the, the year goes on. However, the regular ed tutor salaries are trending lower than we have in pass, so I believe that will end up in a positive at year end to help offset the special ed tutors.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions regarding the financial report?
I tell you, Mr. Lockhart, that the magnet school tuition issue speaks to some of the issues that are going to come later in the board meeting regarding the letter.
HB 5003.
Yes, do you, Mr. President? Yes, will we discuss House Bill 5003? That will be discussed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving the financial report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries seven zero zero. Next item is approval of minutes. Are there any minutes there that need to be pulled?
January 18th, Mr. President.
Any, any other minutes? Is there a motion regarding 5B through 5D?
Yes, Mr. President. I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of the January 24th, 2023 Public Forum with Finance Committee Meeting, the January 31st, 2023 Public Forum with Finance Committee Meeting, and the February 7th, 2023 Public Forum with Finance Committee Meeting.
Is there a second? Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion of 5B through 5D? Seeing and hearing none. Is there a question? Ms. Kanter?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's very difficult for me to hear on some of this, and I'm sorry. On the regular minutes for January 31st, I couldn't hear the date. There was no mention of the dress code policy discussion that was typed up in the written minutes.
That's in the January 18th.
I, I, Mr. Panos is alluding to that that's the reason he was pulling January 18th when that issue came up.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I couldn't hear the date. Thank you.
So all those in favor of approving 5B, 5C, and 5D, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries seven zero zero. Is there another motion, Mr., Ms. Taylor?
Yes. I move the Board of Education approves the minutes of the January 18th, 2023 Regular Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Panos. And Mr. Panos, you asked this to be pulled.
Yes. In the January 18th meeting, I, I couldn't find any, I could find the, where we moved that the Board add the following, you know, agenda item, to add it to the agenda, which had to do with the dress code of the students, which had, you know, to add that pants or trousers be worn around the waist, et cetera. And that got on, but I, I looked and looked, and I just couldn't find where we actually discussed and voted on it as recorded. Maybe someone else could find it for me? Maybe someone else could find it for me?
So I think what we'll do, if that's okay, Mr. Panos, is send this back through Alexis, probably to, I don't know if it would be Robin or Sally, to go and listen to the minutes there and probably add it. Because we did add it to the agenda, but then it became an agenda item, and there's not a reference, I guess, in the minutes. Yep, Alexis?
So, just so I understand the question, you're wondering where it's listed?
Yeah.
Because I was working with Sally Brown with this, and on the item number five, the following motion, if approved, is to be placed after item 10B, School Liaison Reports in the agenda and requires two-thirds majority vote. It would go after the Paquonic School report underneath, after Mr. Panos's Paquonic School report. That's where it was the discussion to be placed.
There it is.
What number, six?
Oh, okay, that's correct, under six. Right, yeah.
I believe they're satisfied on my answer.
Are you satisfied, Mr. Panos?
Okay.
Ask Ms. Cantor if she sees it. Ms. Cantor, do you see what they're taught, where they're mentioning it on the 18th?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
The motion to approve the minutes of January 18th, it was seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions, motion carries eight zero zero. And Alexis, all the other motions that I said seven zero zero were eight zero zero. Sorry, Ms. Cantor. It was actually Nathan that I wasn't counting. The next item is the Student Representative Report, and our new student representative, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First off, I would like to say thank you for this wonderful opportunity. It still does not feel real to be on this side of the table, really doesn't. Also, he doesn't want me to do this, but I also want to thank Mr. Breon Parker for this wonderful opportunity, my principal, been nurturing me for four years. If you ask him, he will say I've come a long, long way. So that being said, I'm happy to hear, and as you guys heard, Vice President of Capitol League. So to also mention that one of our core values is harnessing power in education. So within that, I know the power of my voice, representing the students, while also representing the town of Windsor on a statewide basis. And I just want to say thank you. There is no update as of right now. I know the seniors are excited to go on college visits, definitely. And I do mine this week in the Hampton University. But that being said, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I will have a thorough update next month. I am coming.
Thank you very much. Any brief questions for Mr. Davis, Mr. Lockhart?
Mr. Davis, I just wish to welcome you to the Board of Education. I've known you for a very long time. You've come a long way. God is good, and He's not done with you yet, so keep doing what you're doing, young man.
Thank you, sir.
And if you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome to stay. But, and you can take, you're not a voting member, but you can take part in discussions that we have. But also knowing you are a student, you know, feel free to leave as well. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the President's Report. On Friday, January 27th, I went to John F. Kennedy School and was joined to join Senator Chris Murphy, Dr. Hill, State Representative Jane Garibay, Mayor Trinks, Board Member Ayanna Taylor, and others to honor Emma Hadari, a winner of the Senators Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest. It was a great event, and her essay was truly inspiring. On Saturday, February 4th, I attended the first Robotics FTC Qualifier at Sage Park Windsor's Blazing Spirits. As you heard earlier, at Audience to Visitor, the team had placed in second place out of 19 teams at the end of the preliminary rounds. Unfortunately, we lost in the semifinals. I know that Mr. Panos attended this event as well. On Friday, February 10th, I attended with Mr. Lockhart, Mr. Wallaston, Ms. Taylor, and Dr. Hill, an amazing Black History celebration at Windsor High School, put on by the music department. It was really spectacular, unbelievable. Yesterday, I attended an event at Central Connecticut State University, presented by Fanuc, a leading supplier of automation for manufacturing, and also TechEd, a career and tech ed training company that was entitled "Aligning Skills Between Industry and Academia." We heard from experts, including representatives from local and international manufacturing companies about the need for skilled workers with automation training certifications. With our interest on both sides of the aisle vocational training, it was a great opportunity to learn more of what's going on. Also on hand was Paul Lavoy, Connecticut's Chief Manufacturing Officer, which is a fairly new position, and also Chris DePentim, a president of CBIA, the business organization for the state. We later got a tour of CCSU's robotics and mechatronics facilities, which are brand-new, state-of-the-art. Some of the discussions was, that took place on the panel, talked about the need for not only more engineers, but also more machinists and tool and die people. And that many in those types of positions, often blue-collar positions, are retiring. It's an older workforce. And there's a need really for good-quality jobs with some certifications required, even before you go to a two- or four-year college. And I know that the CTE program here is doing great, great work with looking at those pathways. We're not, and I mentioned this, we're a comprehensive high school. I said, we're not a tech school, but they're very interested in what our comprehensive high schools doing to help give opportunities and different choices for students. So I would love to have Mr. Lavoy come and visit us at some point. And they talked about the number of engineers coming out of schools in Connecticut. There's about 2,000 each year. Not all 2,000 stay in Connecticut. And there's really a need in the next five years in Connecticut for 20,000 more engineers. The thing is, if we don't get this, what this will mean probably is some businesses either, well, not, first, not growing businesses, and other businesses, and suppliers who may not be able to stay in Connecticut. So, again, it looked like right up our alley of what we're heading here in Windsor and giving those opportunities. Any questions on my report? Next item is 7B, Sage Park Middle School Roof Replacement Project.
Mr. President, I move that a project for a partial roof replacement at Sage Park Middle School be approved by the Board of Education, as well as the educational specifications for such project. Further, that the completion of this project and authorization for the code compliance grant be implemented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. And I don't know, Ms... Do you want to do a background?
Yeah, yeah. So the background of this is that approximately 74,200 square feet portion of the roof at Sage Park Middle School is beyond its useful life expectancy and is becoming problematic with ongoing leaks. The area of the roofing was originally installed during the 1993 building addition. The design of the project is complete. Administration plans to apply for a reimbursement grant to partially fund the construction. The State of Connecticut Grant Application Process defines the requirements related to applying for and receiving grant funding. There are specific requirements for the format and wording of the Town Council and Board of Education actions. The preliminary estimate for the roof estimate cost is approximately $2,900,000, including a construction contingency. If approved, the estimated state grant reimbursement will be 48% of the cost. With that being said, the current status is that the partial roof replacement project qualifies for the partial reimbursement by the State of Connecticut. The state requires that a formal approval process be followed by the Board of Education and the Town Council. And the state requires a formal approval by the Board of Education to approve the project and the education specification of the project. With that being said, is the recommendation that in order to comply with the applicable funding regulations, the Board of Education must approve the educational specifications and for the request to the Town Council for necessary legislative action. Thus, the motion that's on the floor in front of us.
Are there questions? I know the Bachelor's name is here, so if the folks have any questions regarding this agenda item.
The, just, maybe you could remind us, why the, have we already done part of the roof already? Why, this is another partial, is that the idea?
Right, so, and you'll see another one next year. So we had to break it up in three phases due to cost.
Okay, three stages, okay. So cost was the consideration, and we had, I mean, after all, it's other people's money, right?
Couldn't we have just had an open building, you know? Why a roof?
Put a tent. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries eight zero zero.
Mr. President, I move that we proceed to Agenda Item 7D, which discusses the budget request. Satisfy that portion of the agenda and then go back to the regular order of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Okay, I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? We're just flip-flopping 7C and 7D. All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention, motion carries eight zero zero. We're now at Finance, we're now at Finance Committee's recommendation regarding the 2023-2024 budget. Is there a motion?
Yes. Move that the Board of Education accept the proposed 2023-2024 budget submitted to the Board of Education by the Superintendent Dr. Terrell Hill with a 4.84% increase over the current year's budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. And discussion?
Just briefly, Mr. President. We went through the budget process, and we're very favorable based off of what was being presented to us during the deliberations. It's my understanding that Mr. Panos, there's some things that he would like to bring forth for discussion through substitute motions at this point. So that those would be in order. I would recommend that instead of going through the main motion, that we address Mr. Panos's substitute motions. And then if there's any changes, then defer back to the main motion.
Any objection to that? Mr. Panos, do you have a substitute motion?
Yes, my substitute motion is to reduce the current, the current proposal by 110,200 to, for an increase of $3,589,375, and a percent increase of 4.69 for a new budget of $80,073,811, by making certain changes in the positions of the SELs and the student support counselors.
So are there, are there, the...
Which I will explain.
Okay.
The...
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Panos, substitute motion, seconded by Mr. Alec.
Before we begin, Mr. President, I just want to make sure that we understand the exact amount, that the stenographer has the exact amount.
You have it, the, a reduction of 110,200 in the proposed increase.
And that, so that means it brings it down to 4.69, correct?
And that reduces it to 4.69 to, and if you want, and the total new budget then would be $80,073,811. And the new increase in total dollars would be $3,589,375.
Did you want to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. The proposed budget adds two SEL specialists to be on budget by removing them from being grant-funded by the ESAR money. These costs are around $40,000 to $45,000 per year each. All other SEL positions are grant-funded. Clover Street, though, has two SEL positions that are grant-funded. The added, the added specialists are to be added to the high school. They're the funded ones, which is going to have two funded SEL specialists for the high school, moving them off grant and onto the budget. And so what I'm suggesting is that one of those come from the Clover Street SELs, because Clover Street has two SELs. You now have a VP at Clover Street, whereas before you didn't. So you have that added thing. And it was one of the reasons we heard for having an extra SEL specialist over the last few years was the lack of a VP. They needed some more. So they can have one SEL like all the other elementary schools. They should be able to reduce by one SEL at Clover, thus using the grant money for one of the SELs at the high school. Furthermore, the high school and middle schools each have a current position called Student Support Coordinator. And from the job description that we received, the functions are quite similar to the SEL specialist. The Student Support Coordinator is a cost of $61,200 at the high school and $49,000 at the middle school. So part of these functions do contain, have some slight supervisory function, apparently for SEL matters. But it would appear that these can be handled by Dr. Mallory, who is the coordinator of the entire SEL program. So Dr. Mallory, of course, is paid out of the Alliance Grant, so it's an issue. He should be able to handle this. And so I'm suggesting here that we eliminate the Student Support Coordinator positions in both schools and just have, and just have the two SEL positions, so that now part of the money for the student... now part of the money for the Student Support Coordinator, which is $61,200, would then be used for a, for a, one of the SEL specialists, and, and to be matching, to keep it similar at the, at Sage Park, where we have two grant-funded SEL specialists. We can, they're, the function of the Student Support Coordinator there can be handled by those SEL specialists and with the supervision of Dr. Mallory. So, that would, that would save the cost of the middle school Student Support Coordinator, and it would reduce the cost of the high school Student Support Coordinator. The, so if you, if you add these up, you, you save $45,000 for making the substitution, taking the SEL position from Clover and having that grant-supported one of the high school proposed SEL on-budget be a grant-supported position. That, so that saves about $45,000. Then, the high school coordinator goes from about 16, $61,200 to $45,000, so that's about $16,200 is saved. And then finally, the elimination of the Student Support Coordinator at the middle school saves the $49,000, and if you add the three, it comes to 110,200. Now, that's a saving, you know, I, my concern here is that we are adding quite a bit of ancillary functions to the school. And so, we have this, it's, these are overlapping. If you, you look, I mean, we have guidance or counselors, student counselors, we have, of course, VPs, social workers, you know, there's quite a bit of overlap here. And my concern is that over, over time, you know, we'll be just expanding beyond what we should from our main focus, which is the academics, and that, you know, if we can, if we can do this, this would, this would keep us more focused and, and with a tighter, a tighter budget, accomplish the same thing we want. So, that's, that's the reason why I am proposing it. So, I just want to hear your comments about it, and we can have a vote.
On this side, who'd like to speak? Mr. Wallaston first?
Yeah, so, I guess first things first, I'd just like to start with the, the big ideas. The first big idea is that we're coming from an operating cost budget that was six-plus percent, and we're down to 4.84%. So, we've already shaved off quite a lot to get to where we are right now. And I understand Mr. Panos's sentiments to an extent, but at the same time, we just spoke on our physical plans and the fact that it's going to take, we have to repair a roof in three, three parts because we're not able to allocate the money all at once. So, we have to break down the project into three different stages. And it just leads me to, to, to say, you know, in reality, we need to fund our schools more, even if you were saying, all right, let's eliminate these positions so we can fund our physical plants or, or put that money towards something else, where you felt like the money was to be better used on the school, but in reality, we're underserving our schools financially as far as what we can afford to do in right now because the economy, a 4.84 is really a penny pinch. Anything less is really, really pinching pennies as well. And just even as far as the, the general idea of cutting these supports, staff positions, I just feel like it's, you can't just look at finances and, and make that decision because behind each support staff is a caseload, and behind, in, in every caseload is a set of students, and those students are real people who rely on these supports to be able to, to get through their classes. So, I believe if there are these many at Clover, I, I believe they would be able to present to us a caseload in which these specialists and support staffs are directly working with students, and to say, to eat double hockey sticks with these students and just, and save a little bit of money is, is, is wrong, because we need to, we need to fund our schools more, we need to get more creative about how we're going to fund our schools, we have to be more responsible about funding our schools and investing in the future of our students. So, I just got to say that I, I, I can't agree with that, that cut.
Anybody else like to, Ms. Clayce?
Thank you. I totally understand the concern around scope creep and possibly having so many people in the building and not, and taking our focus away from education. However, I think we're in a world where our children have just come out of a pandemic, and they're, they're behind in their educational and their social-emotional learning in, in different ways because they have not been in classrooms for two years in a consistent way. And so, I believe that they do need extra support, and we're going to see that extra support grow. If, I wish we could grow it more, but it, it's needed for at least two years out, in my opinion. So, for this budget, and I also want to say that I think that even though there's distinctions in staffing, every staff person brings with them their own subject matter expertise and their own focus and function in the system. And so, even though we were performing with student guidance counselors and other folks that are comparable, we were functioning at that level prior to the pandemic, and we still needed support. So, post-pandemic, these children need further interventions and further supports, and our teachers and families need them as well, to be frank. So, I, I understand the thought process about kind of really worrying about focusing on education in its strictest sense, but I would really, I support these positions in the budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Taylor? Ms. Cantor and then Ms. Taylor. Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. I had a hard time taking myself off. I mean, thank you. I just want to say, I'm in support of having two SEL ESAR-funded positions at the high school, not two new added hires for this year's budget. I think we need to be fiscally responsible. We're out of the pandemic. This has been in for a year and nine months. Children have been back in school. I see progress has been made, and we're going back to a normal way of life. And when you go back to a normal way of life, people will readjust to the way the norm is. And people are having an extremely difficult time surviving this economy with the inflation because the government printed so much money at this point in time, and that's why our inflation is so high. People have high rents, high groceries, they have all kinds of bills. That's why the governor afforded the students the opportunity to continue to receive, or to start up again, receiving free breakfast and free lunch meals throughout this school year. So, I'm in favor of not having two added positions to the budget and supporting, using the ESAR-funded money, which is for this COVID relief, in place of that. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Hill? Yep.
Not arguing Mr. Panos's point right now, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm just trying to clarify, because I just keep hearing something that's just not correct. Ms. Batcholder, can you explain that?
Sure. So, we didn't add a new position to the budget. These positions have been here last year and this school year, and we reduced staffing at Windsor High School in order to add these two positions into the budget. So, nothing was added. We actually reduced.
We reduced positions. And just, and we, we had these people here, but we still took away from the high school. So, there's not like, we just took these people and moved them there. One of the positions, because we can't name people, that's not appropriate, they've been there for almost 15 years. I just changed the title, and this is what this person is doing. So, we didn't go out and hire folks, and they just got a title change.
I, I didn't think I said that, or that you hired.
I did, I heard, she said add twice.
Oh.
And then you, and what you had said was.
I think, I think she, I think she understands that we're not putting two new positions, we're just changing how they're funded, for a couple of the positions.
Funding.
From ESAR two.
No, because she's been here 15 years.
The school, what you're, the Student Support Coordinator has been in there at Sage and High School for years. It used to be called the ISS Coordinator, which is a state mandated.
School suspension.
That's state mandated. So, we can go back to ISS, but that's mandated.
That's the ISS.
They've, they've changed the format of it.
I didn't like that name. I didn't like that focus.
I was just looking at the job description here, and, you know, I don't know, maybe I missed that here.
They don't call it in-school suspension anymore.
So, we're not doing in-school suspension anymore, and I, I know you have the job descriptions, I understand that. It's, I'm trying not to talk about an individual, but the person's been here, we didn't add any money, and there's, there's more than a value added, because I know the credentialing that the person have and the people have, so it's not just, you can read a job description, everybody has a job description, but that's not, you know, part and parcel of everything that person does and the value of the position in the building. That's all I want to say. But I wanted to be clear, and I understand now, Ms. Panos, you didn't say it, but I heard Ms. Cantor saying, I want to be clear that we weren't just adding, you know, as Mr. Wallston said, we, we cut from just rolling over, so we didn't add.
Yeah. The main point is that there are, there are two that went off grant funding onto, on budget, that's all. And those are two SEL positions. And, and I'm just saying, you already have, you have two at Clover, whereas all the other three have just one, and so, it would seem that you could at least move one SEL position now that you have a VP at Clover, right?
There's no.
It's all the same budget we have.
Well, you will have one, right?
Thank you.
That's a, yeah. Well, I mean, you would rather have that, right?
So, you need 110, if I'm clear, so we don't belabor this, you want 110,200 cut from the budget.
Well, that's, I had the, the formal motion, if it comes out some other way.
Okay.
If there's some other way, you know, with, maybe you would reduce, if you reduce the SEL by one at the high school and keep the student.
Oh, I, I appreciate, you gave us a, a path, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I appreciate that offer of a path.
But, anyway.
Vice President Lockhart.
Yeah, so, the plan is to add a VP, to eliminate the head teacher position at Clover and make it a VP, correct?
The assistant principal, we call him, yeah, we changed the name.
So, the only thing that I want to call out is.
Increase of about what?
There might, there might be some confusion in the budget.
$10,000 increase.
That I didn't catch on page four, it does not show, unless I'm reading this incorrectly, it does not show an FTE for the assistant principal on page four.
So, page.
These are this 23. This is the current year. Okay. All right, so I just want to make sure that, you know, that there's no confusion there. Right? No, I know, but I, I, we're, again, we're, we're, again, we're on TV again, I just want to make sure the question is asked.
Yes.
So, I just wanted to back up the fact that he acknowledged that we're going to not have the head teacher, it's going to be a VP. Thank you very much.
Ms. Taylor?
Never mind.
Mr. Halleck?
Thank you. It just, it seems like to me that there's a lot of, a lot of overlap between the Student Support Coordinator and the, the SEL specialist. In the job description, it says, you refers to SEL at least six or seven times in there. So, you know, that's just what we're trying to do, is not, is not have that overlap. And I also had a question. Clover is, is, is a smaller school. Do you, you think you guys could, or Clover could get by with a one SEL specialist for the year, and see how, and see how it goes?
So, I will address it this way, as I said to Mr. Panos, the requested reduction to the budget as proposed is 110,200, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's the total you came to, for a 4.69% budget increase. And so, that's what we work with, but I have stressed throughout the years, because this is listening public, so I've stressed from day one, coming on board superintendent, in every meeting, that the SEL work, I know, although people may not understand it completely, it is of utmost importance to me in this district, and I'm going to support that. I respect what my board says, and they said they want to cut, but I don't really, I'm not in agreement with the maneuvering of SEL people, like, it's not widgets, as it's coming across to me. It's way more important, and there's a deeper connection with students. And our student rep has asked me, I've been holding him up, he's been wanting to speak to us, because he lives it, and so, I told him to hold on. If that's okay, Mr. President, he can speak to his experience in the building. Just as an example, but I'm respecting the cut request, but I am going to respectfully find other ways to get to the cut that you're asking for.
Mr. Davis?
Still trying to figure this thing out, as you can tell. Okay, so, I'll go as my personal experience. It was last year, I lost a very dear best friend, music mentor. This was my guy, absolutely amazing. Without the specialist, I don't know what I would have done, especially, this was last year's spring, almost a year ago, it was concert season, and as you guys know, I'm a musician. So, losing my number one music mentor as a musician, that is very, very hard. It's like losing a coach right before the championship game. So, without these specialists, I don't know what I would have done. They coached me, they helped me get through this rough time.
Thank you. Anybody else over on this side of me, to the right side of me? I'd like to weigh in on this myself, partially with my social work degree that I have. The pandemic may be quote-unquote over, or, or as a pandemic, but we have lasting effects to the social-emotional health of our students, of our families, of our faculties. There are certain school districts that, I don't know if it was Old Saybrook, that long ago had a mental health check-in early on on all their students, because a student could look fine, act, seemingly act fine, but the questions in, in how they got towards the mental health aspect led them to say, okay, this, yeah, this kid looks okay, he's a great student, but they're struggling, we don't know. It's this, the idea of a disability that you don't, you don't see. And so, I, I'm hoping that down the road, the state, the state is recognizing this. They've put a lot of money into child mental health last year, it's happening again, and I think Ms. Cantor talked about the free and reduced lunches. It wasn't just the governor, the governor signed it, but it was unanimous. Nothing is unanimous in our legislature. Everybody on the Senate and the House voted to continue for this year free and reduced price lunches. And, you know, thank you to Ms. Garibay and Ms. Khan in our district for early on jumping on that bandwagon to help us here in Windsor, because otherwise, if that didn't happen, we would have been looking for Dr. Hill, what would it cost for free and reduced price lunches for next year? What would the cost if that was too expensive? I've mentioned before, how do we potentially raise that, that, you know, reduced price lunch up a bit, so we'd still, people would qualify federally, but we would have to pay additional dollars? The social-emotional learning is not just, there's a curriculum, there's, there's five or six major points to SEL, and this is something that's not going to be done over, over time, and at, at some point, I agree, we, we are not going to be able to support a continuation of a lot of items in our budget year after year, and tough decisions may be made, have to be made. As you know, we already cut five teaching positions in this budget. I know we had one comment by someone about, one was in the CTE. I know we had one comment by someone about, one was in the C T E area. And it might have been in, in a food area. But I'd love to see many more courses offered in C T E, if we could get the teachers having to go through alternative route of certification or whatever to get those folks in our building. So kids will know, students will know, there's many other paths to a job without necessarily having to go to college. So I, I, I cannot support this. I, I think the S E L positions are critical. I think it's wonderful that, I think we're a model for the state of how S E L operates. So I, I will oppose these cuts. Thank you. Mr. Panos?
May I respond to that? Of course, I did not say that I was going to eliminate the S E L positions. None of, none of, you know, it just, I mean, well, except to say that the one at Clover Street, you, you, there's a difference. You have one at Quanic, you have two at Clover. Well, you have one at Oliver Els, which is much larger. You have one of J F K, which is larger. So what is the reason why you have two at Clover? Especially since we expect to approve a V P. And, you know, so, you know, the, the argument that I'm, that we're proposing to shut down S E L is, is simply, you know, off base. That, that irrelevant to what we're proposing. We're keeping the two, we're saying keep two S E L specialists since they, they come under the supervision of Dr. Mallory. Now, the, so, you know, the student support card in there, I don't know where that, I assume that comes under the principle, but you would have here overlapping functions and you would have, you have two different boxes. I just say, this is like, you know, he's like, um, uh, Dr. Mallory covers all the schools and he supervises or, you know, manages all of these. It is a tight group, you know, just nine people, right? And so, you know, it, it's something that he has to do. I mean, and so I'm just looking at this as nothing that is, is not cutting S E L to speak of anyway. I mean, unless you say the student support coordinator, you know, you've, you've put that in, it seems, it's just a, a running list of things that you, you kind of gave this position. So I, I don't see that the criticisms here apply. I do intend to, to keep the S E L, but we, you know, if, if we can get out of this now, if we can get out, you know, get out of these problems in the next few years, you know, there's, there's plenty of opportunities right now, you know. So, you know, it's, it's almost like a good time, if somebody's looking for a job, this is a good time in education or generally to, to get a position. It would appear to be a, you know, a, a good time to, to, to try it out. You know, as I pointed out, there are other support mechanisms. You don't just have to have that one, the student support coordinator doing the function. You have, you have several other people that I mentioned. You have social worker, you have, you have, you know, V Ps, you have counselor, student counselors, they're, they're all involved in the kind of social work that you're referring to, they all have it. So it's not that you would be, you're left out, you know, and not have, and besides, you have two S E L specialists. So that, that's all I'm saying. I think it's a prudent thing to do. You know, so I, I think that, you know, that, you know, I'll just leave it at that if you want.
Ms. Taylor?
No, it's Mr. Wilson.
Oh, Mr. Wilson, sorry.
No, it's all right. In the spirit of our friend, Don, Mr. Harris, who was just here a while ago, I think we're most in our lane when we leave operations over to the superintendent. And, um, saying that to say, um, four point eight four is not enough. I, I think that's kind of the, the general consensus of my caucus. Four point eight four is not enough. Our students have needs. Our physical plans have needs. Our students have academic needs. Our students have social emotional needs. Four point eight four is not enough. Four point eight four is not enough, is just not enough. We all acknowledge that. But with keeping the taxpayers' pocket in mind, with keeping the town's budget in mind, with looking out for our townspeople and for our, our children in this town, we said, all right, we can work with four point eight four. That's, that's kind of the consensus we have. We're, we're cutting back from our operating of, of six plus percent. I don't, I don't believe any further cuts would be right.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Ms. Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. I'm a licensed healthcare professional, and I just want to say, I know people have suffered a lot through COVID. And one way to help you get out of that mode is to move forward and live in the now, not the past. And I know it's difficult, but they have each other they can talk to in school. They have their friends, they have their groups, they hang around. You have other professionals in this school. And I just think it's a good thing that they don't become completely dependent on S E L. Because I'm, from what I'm seeing is, some people don't move forward in the past from losing a loved one, a very close friend. And the best way to overcome this is to move forward, go back to a normal way of life. And that's already proven in this field of, in healthcare. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
Um, I think it's a slippery slope to speak to mental health when you're not a mental health professional, so I'm just going to leave that right there. I think that we need to just be very careful about knowing what our kiddos need beyond the physical. There's different abilities and different setbacks that people go through that you can't physically see. Just because someone isn't sneezing doesn't mean they don't have a cold. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Panos, seconded by Mr. Halleck to reduce the budget by a hundred ten thousand, two hundred, which would yield now, instead of a four point eight four, a four point six nine percent increase. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Extentions? Motion fails. Three, five. Now we're back on the main motion. Yep, back, we have the main motion that originally was made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos.
Mr. Panos, are you, are you going to make any more substitute motions before we prepare to close on this motion?
I will, I do. I, I would, I would like to, a substantive motion to reduce the budget by a mere sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. By removing about ten thousand dollars from the C A B vendor budget, which is, and removing from the superintendent vendor, the National Center for School Research and Technology by six thousand, eight hundred and fifty. For a total of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And the new increase would then be three million, six hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five. And a percent increase of four point eight one. For a new proposed budget of eighty million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, a hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Panos, seconded by Mr. Halleck.
Yeah, but, Mr. Panos is the maker of the motion, he gets to speak first, and then I wish we could, and I was at them.
Okay. We have a list of the vendor service fees here. And in it, you'll see that the C A B fees seem a bit high, especially, there is a total of a close, to, close to twenty-nine thousand, made up of dues at thirty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty, an online policy of fifteen hundred dollars for the policy service, and a policy services fee of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and ten. But for policies, we generally use shipment and goodwin mainly. I think that we should propose eliminating or reducing the funding for the C A B policy service. Perhaps we can just reduce by ten thousand dollars and see what, what we can get. If all the districts were paying similar fees of around twenty thousand dollars per year, C A B would be receiving around two million, or at least two million dollars a year. For a small group like that, that's a lot of money. So I, you know, I, I'm just looking at it from this, this foundness. So that's, um, that's, you know, that, that's what I like to do with the C A B. Also, under the superintendent's dues and fees, he has two large fees that are for research institutes that mainly receive their funding, as I looked at, you know, researched the websites, and say, from donor organizations like the Gates Foundation, various government bodies or whatever. And so these are the, you know, the National Center for Educational Research and Technology is for six thousand, eight hundred and fifty. And the Connecticut Center for School Change is for five thousand, one hundred and eighty-six. And so what I'm suggesting is that, you know, at the same time, of course, Dr. Hill is a member of CAPS, that's a fine organization, is for five thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Also, the Hartford Area Superintendent's Association is just three hundred and fifty. And he's also in the, we are, we are also with the Connecticut Association of Schools. That's just eight hundred dollars. But I'm, I'm just trying to understand, I think I came, I kind of questioned this last year. What was the point, you know, what do we do, what do we get with the National Center for Educational Research and Technology for the six thousand, eight hundred and fifty? And so, you know, one or the other, you know, I mean, you have a couple of researchers, it seems that we're, we're just supporting it. We get most of our, our, you know, initiatives here that come from the state. So I'm not sure what these are for. And so I'm suggesting that, just in the interest of, you know, being, sharpening the pencil, that perhaps we could reduce C A B by at least ten thousand dollars and just eliminate one of these that is on the, comes, is covered under the superintendent. So it's, it's not much, but it's just something that's, it came out to me as I looked through the vendor list. And that's the, that's the reason for my suggestion.
Mr. Lockhart. Thank you, Mr. President. So I openly admit that my, all my comments are going to be with my, my Windsor Board of Education hat and not my C A B first vice president hat. I want to make sure I'm very clear about that. We, these cuts are coming directly from the district site of the budget. Dr. Hill trimmed his budget tremendously during the last budget cycle. And I do remember you bringing up the piece about one of the affiliations that you, you took exception to. As far as the C A B piece, we've always agreed that we have two points of view for policy, shipment and goodwin and C A B, so that we wouldn't be biased by one or the other. So if we ever needed policy support, we had two different options that we can go to. And the C A B policy stuff is something that really given us at a much, I believe, much more affordable and readily rate than if we would go on by hour with ship, with, with shipment and goodwin. So I'm not in favor of cutting anything from this particular site. He really, really trimmed the, what he perceived as stuff that he didn't need. And he has made it very clear last year during the budget process, and he's made it clear this year, is the same support, is the same networking, and the same guidance that he uses to help him to be an effective superintendent. The C A B piece, yes, I am part of the board of directors of C A B, but as C A B has supported this district for a very long time, through the Lighthouse Project, all the way to where we are today. So for us to cut any type of funding, just because of policy, I, there's no way that I can even support that. And that's not even me being on the board of directors. That's just me in principle. I just, I just can't support that cut.
Ms. Taylor first, and Mr. Wilson, and then I'll go back this way.
Um, through you, Mr. President, can we find out how many motions Mr. Panos has? Because I just want to know, like, do we, should he be like telling us all about it in the beginning? Or should it be individual like this? Because it just seems like, I wish I knew what it all was before we like pick and choose what things. Because I can't believe we are debating point four percent increase. I can't believe we're debating sixteen thousand dollars. Last time it was a hundred and ten thousand dollars. I just want to know, like, is this going to be like, when this doesn't go through, is he going to think of another one? Or how many, what, like, how long is the list?
Mr. Lockhart?
How does that work?
Mr. Panos did speak to me before the meeting. And I, I did ask Mr. Panos that, well, I advised Mr. Panos, I will put the main motion on the table. And instead of us going through a long debate on the main motion and then start doing a long debate on his substitute motions, I asked him, whatever motions he had, to bring them forth, with the understanding that once that's done, it will probably take care of all discussions we got for the main motion, and we'd just be done. So it's my understanding, he probably has one more, and that's it. But I will yield to Mr. Panos on that.
Um, well, uh, well, I, you know, just as a point of order, of course, the procedure should, you know, just, you know, I'm accustomed to these things going on until midnight.
Yep, yep.
Which is the normal way that, that the board, the, you know, and so maybe that disadvantage of twenty, twenty-two years of history, is, you know, this is by the board.
Wish you could have left the chocolates then.
Yeah, we could have, could have used it. No, but I, I don't have any, you know, I, I don't have any other motion. I don't know if Jeremy will have a motion, but these are the only two that, that I have. But just as a matter of procedure, this is the normal parliamentary procedure for being on a board of education and going through the budget procedure. You don't just line it up and then say, well, all right, that's, you, you actually discuss these things. And like I say, I, you know, when you were in high school, believe me, these things would go on and on. And that is the normal, that is the way budgets are supposed to be done until, you know, so, you know, I, I disagree with the, with the disagreement to this. But there, I have no more motion, just for the, just personally.
Mr. President, just to answer her question, it was my understanding, it was three? That was my understanding based off my conversation. I didn't know who they were coming from, but it was my understanding, they had three coming from the Republican side.
There may be a third one, yes.
Anybody else? Mr. Wilson?
Yes, Mr. President, just for the listening public, as far as C A B and was, was it CAPS? The other one he proposed cuts to? I was just like to share my experience with them. I'm a first year, first term, sorry, board member. I left my first year behind in November. I took unpaid days to go to a lot of these trainings and these orientations. So I, I didn't get paid for my day job, drove to wherever these places were, and I, I took unpaid days to receive training because I valued the information that I received the first time in November. And when I found out there was multiple sessions that I would be able to go to to gain more information to become a better board member, I couldn't pass up the opportunity. So I'm very grateful for the superintendent's dedication to have an opportunity for us, because that's all it is, is an opportunity. If we choose to take it up or not, that's upon us. But he gave me an opportunity to go out, get more information and better do my job from behind the dais. So I'm really grateful for that. And every time I receive very insightful information, I'm, I'm very happy for the opportunity to have gone out to these, whether it was a new board member orientation or a leadership forum, or just things to help us understand deeper how to do the job of a board member by people who are doing this. how to do the job of a board member by people who are doing this work for a long period of time. And the speakers they've had, every conference are always very profound, they have so many different perspectives, and even just networking in that space with so many different education professionals, as a 24-year-old was, has just been transformational for me. As a 24-year-old, I'm sitting in rooms with superintendents and longstanding board members, and I'm having conversations and receiving insight and receiving help that I just would not have been able to receive if not for the monies allocated for me to take up this opportunity. It really is upon every person to utilize the money that is lined item here. The money will be spent regardless, but it's really upon us to sign up and make your way there. And I will continue to exhaust opportunities as I plan to be the best board member I can. Thank you.
Ms. Clace?
Sorry.
Ms. Clace?
I just want to say that I'm not going to support this motion, only because I do believe that this is an infrastructure expense, and it's a resource expense. So it's very similar to me in bricks and mortar. It's something that the superintendent in our district relies on. It provides us with best practice information, and it is relatively inexpensive, in my opinion. So it's a cost to me that is part of doing business, that also keeps us to be, continues to us to be one of the best districts we are, because we do follow best practices, and we do take every collaboration to look at what's the best option for our schools. So, thank you.
I'm not sure if they have any comment before you recognize me. Any other comments?
Well, I'll just respond here. First of all, I, what I'm proposing would not reduce any training that you would get from CAPE, Mr. Wallison, that had nothing to do with it. I just looked at the name of this, and it said that it's for policy. Now, it just strikes me as a lot of money if you multiply out by 100 or 120 members, and you say they're paying $23,000 or $20,000, let's call it, you're looking at well over $2 million, and you saw the size of the group there. It's a small, the very, it's a small group. You know, they, we pay dues, there are other things here, you can see there's another $3,000 or $4,000 per. So it is included, you know, the costs are already in. I just saw this as something which is duplication. You know, Mr. Lockhart made his argument that you should have something duplicative, so to speak, but this is, we're paying, you know, for duplicate services here. It seems to me that, you know, we're either using Shipman and Goodwin, which we usually do, that's usually where the new policy comes in. But we occasionally will call up and ask the one person that they have at CAPE, and his one admin assistant, you know, that's about all, that they work on, and maybe a second one or something. But if you add up the money, it comes up to a big number, and I don't think that we would be, I still think that Windsor would be highly supportive of all of its functions, especially those that you mentioned. And your, the functions you mentioned have nothing to do with particular things. So, and, you know, I have yet to hear any kind of explanation as to what it is that we get that is unusual from either of these, you know, the National Center for Educational Research and Technology, or the Connecticut Center for School Change. I don't know, we, I know we get a lot of ideas from a number of different sources. I mean, after all, we're connected, connected to UConn and several others, and others are willing to make these suggestions on new initiatives all the time, especially the State Department of Education. So it seems that we have, it's just another area where you get a little bit extra, just kind of bleeds off and continues year after year. On board, it's just something that struck me, it's come out, and it just, and this is, even though it's a small number, it's a good discipline to go through, to make sure that you don't just, you know, spend just because somebody asks you, or just because, you know, there's some reason, some minor benefit. We haven't even investigated this, these issues. Why is it this number? Why do they want this much money for this, and what do we get specifically? That's my thrust. I'm not against it. I think CAPE is a good organization.
Mr. Lockhart.
With my Board of Ed hat on, I believe in the superintendent's contract, if I remember correctly, and somewhat correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding superintendent can join any organization that he sees as long as it benefits his role as a superintendent. If I'm wrong, someone please correct me on that. And with my CAPE hat, that policy, you're correct, Mr. Panos, is a à la carte service, is not part of your membership dues, and not every single district in the state of Connecticut utilizes the policy services. And we do have three people at the CAPE office, the executive director, who is the general counsel. We also have a senior staff member as well, and we have a person responsible directly for policy. So they've actually beefed up that area with three people because it's been such a huge demand for it in the state.
And as to the policy service, I can speak to it to some degree, because I utilize it. And it's very helpful as president to know what, in general, boilerplates exist, and often they have alternatives. So a couple of times in the short time that I've been president, I've utilized that to see what some alternatives are, and then I feel comfortable because we are a full-paying member of CAPE, if there are questions, to talk to someone at CAPE about why is this, why, what districts have adopted, which ones, at least if they're a CAPE district, and why? So it's been helpful to me as the president to have that service, which is different than, we do get, if there's something required by law, that's when we get Shipman and Goodwin to come in. If something is required that, because of a statutory change. So I don't know everything that goes into that $10,000 for that policy service, but...
Twenty-three thousand.
No, you were asking to cut 10,000.
So are you asking to cut the Center for School Change? Is that what you're asking for?
No, I was, oh, that's, you're on to the other item.
No, no, I'm asking which one are you asking to be cut?
Well, with regard to the superintendent vendor list, it's National Center for Educational Research and Technology. I look at the website, and I, it's not a professional, well, it's a professional organization. I mean, it looks like a research outfit that you could, you could use, you could access what they have. I don't know what we get from it, but it's either that or the Connecticut Center for School Change. I mean, they're both, that sort of research, general. But as I point out, it seems to be the same function as we get from other sources. So, and, you know, I'm not saying that the superintendent shouldn't be in professional organizations, and I pointed them out. I said, you know, it's the, it's CAPS is the main one, and then the Hartford Area. So, you know, I'm not against it, I just can't understand it. I don't see where, where, what is the value of it, and I don't even think that it is a, you know, a professional, at least it doesn't bill itself as a superintendent's professional organization. It looks like a research outfit.
Dr. Hill, would you like to speak to those?
No.
No, okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyway.
Anyone else like to speak to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, we have a motion to reduce the budget. I think you said, Mr. Panos, $16,850?
Yes.
Which would yield, instead of 4.84, a 4.81%. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Can't hear David, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I can't hear.
Call the vote again, she can't hear you calling the vote.
We have a motion on the floor, and I just ask for all those in favor of the motion to cut $16,850 regarding two items that would yield a budget, new budget amount of 4.81%. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Abstentions, motion fails, 3-5. We're to the main motion unless there's another substitute motion. Mr. Halleck?
Thank you. I have a motion to add the, a one full-time position for community service coordinator for $52,207 into the budget.
Is there a second?
One second.
Motion bade by Mr. Halleck, seconded by Mr. Panos. Mr. Halleck, if you'd like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. I feel, I feel that the community service coordinator provides a great, a benefit to our students and the community. As we know, students are required to have at least 20 hours of community service before they can graduate. And I feel that if, not to, not to continue, I'm having this, having an individual in this world, the students are going to lose a leader and a positive role model in our schools, as well as, as well as somebody to assist them in completing their community service hours. As we know, this isn't just, you know, a Monday through Friday position. A lot of these volunteer hours are on the weekend. And it's a, as I think I mentioned, it's a, it's a graduation requirement. So if there's nobody to follow up on what the students are, have completed, then it basically becomes an unfunded mandate, in my opinion. So that's, that's how I feel, that's very important. Thank you.
Any else like to speak to this motion? Ms. Clace?
Thank you. I totally would love to see positions added to the budget, so I would be in support of that. However, I think there are other positions I would prioritize over this position, and we do have other supports for that protocol to be followed, for students to meet their hours. So I would, but if somebody wants to suggest other positions or just increases in the personnel item, I'd happily support those. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to the motion?
What's the, thank you. What is the increase look like with this one FTE added? Does any...
You said 52,207?
That's correct.
So 4.91.
Increase the budget, God. Okay. Any one, Mr. Wallison?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's just, I'm just a little confused, because we just went through two debates to decrease the budget from your caucus by even as little as 16,000. So, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just a little confused about, I'm just a little confused about that, that's all.
Mr. Panos, and then Mr. Lockhart.
No, I would answer that question, but pointing out that, you know, similarly, you say the function of this is taken up by others, which is the same argument that I used before, you know, so, you know, so I can just turn that argument right around. In this particular case, Mr. Halleck sees a need. This is a graduation requirement. Now, I'd be willing to, let's say, you know, myself, you know, I'm not, I'm not fully in support of this myself, but if it should come to the end of the year here, and we see that there are some people who are not meeting the graduation requirements, it might be that Russell Sils had an idea why he wanted to add this position when he did. He was the one who pushed for this way back when it was added. So, you know, I'd be willing to see what it looked like this year and next year in order to do this, but Mr. Halleck, you know, saw how much work it was, and now what we're saying is that it's just going to be done by whoever. And, you know, I had at least ideas of who, you know, who was going to do the SEL work or, but, you know, so I'll just say that there's room on both sides of the aisle on this, on the issue that Mr. Wallison brought up. But that is, that is the reason why he's doing it there. You know, it's supposed to be taken up, but, you know, suppose it isn't, who is it? So that's the reason, I believe, why Mr. Halleck wants to do this.
Ms. Clace first, you haven't spoken.
I will.
Ms. Clace, and then Mr. Wallison, and Mr....
I just want to clarify, when I said the focus and function, I think I've been clear on each of the positions and each of the cuts around focus and function. And so if the superintendent is recommending a position be deprioritized in his budget because he wants to meet a certain number, I believe he's probably made an operational decision about where that focus and function will take place in the organization. So I want to clarify that I did not say it would happen anywhere, I would never say that, and I do agree it's a graduation requirement, but I think that he, the superintendent has decided where that focus and function will happen. So I wanted to clarify that misrepresentation. Thank you.
Mr. Wallison, and then Mr. Lockhart.
So, I guess what I'll say is, a few days ago, while speaking in, with a different group of people, I made a mention of two things, power and privilege. On this side of the dais, we all have, we all have both. We may be treading an ethical and a moral line here, very thin, and I'll wrap up my sentiments there.
Mr. Lockhart?
I believe that Dr. Hill stated that disposition would be absorbed by the principal in working with the guidance counselor to manage those hours. Is that correct, Ms. Batsholder?
Yes, and we also have an online program that we've been using for quite a while. So, yes, this...
So with that being said, I'm kind of biased on this one, to be honest with you. I'm sentimental to the position itself, and I'm also sentimental to the person that previously held the position. So the position is just what it is, it's a job, it's up to Dr. Hill, his design need to hire whoever it could be if it was a position. I think he made it very clear, though, that he moved that FTE to satisfy another need when the district, so I'm torn about it. He has satisfied to me that the function will be completed. I'm also happy to add positions. Not horse-trading anything, but you know, if we're going to be adding positions, I would love to add like 10 new pairs. Or the amount of pairs that was discussed during the budget, that we're short, we have more pairs in the district than we have that's in the budget book right now, because of the amount of cases we have within our buildings right now. So if we really want to entertain that discussion about adding staff and taking a look at that, I would definitely love to have that conversation. On this one, I'm torn. The position definitely has its merit and value, but at this time, Dr. Hill has made it very clear that it just can't be supported by a full FTE, and he's got it distributed through other people's responsibilities. So I definitely share the sentiment with Mr. Halleck on this. It's definitely something that needs to be done. If Dr. Hill has satisfied to us that he's getting the objective done, then I regrettably can't see supporting adding that FTE back in.
Anyone else? Mr. Halleck?
I just want to say, as far as, are we on our principals, our counselors, they're very busy throughout the day, I just don't see them having enough time to take this on as well, and that's another concern of mine.
One thing, I know I've utilized the service, and through, through, through our robotics program, where we needed assistance, and... assistance, and it, it ended up being very easy of, of going through, um, uh, Ms. Edwards, at Windsor High School, as well as a clerical support person for Ms. Fudge in guidance. And then electronically, I, so I knew the students that were assigned, they signed up, they, there's a bulletin board that they utilize. It's also often published on the DubHub, um, broadcast that's made daily if there are opportunities. And then the student has to send the nonprofit or the other entity an email. And if, so the kid didn't show up, you're not, you're not certifying to them, so they don't get credit for it. I think it's a valuable position, but based on where we are and, and the budget constraints, but as, as Mr. Panos alluded to, if for some reason, at the end of the year, we hear that there is quite a number of students who are, don't make the threshold, I'd be interested whether or not the school just throws up their hands and says, everybody's gonna graduate, and, and to kinda track that. Because I think the idea of instilling community service in our students is, is very important, a very important thing to do. We know there's many good civic organizations in town, and other than the Lions Club, everybody else is hurting. The Rotary Club here is down often to six to seven members at a meeting. Civitan has gone out of business. The JCs, which often had an, an, an upper limit of when you needed to get yourself out of JCs, now just lets anybody stay in. So instilling the concept of community service, I think, is important. But we're weighing other things. We're cutting five teaching positions, as Mr. Lockhart alluded to. We found out that there's a need for, currently, more pairs that are in the budget. So, as much as I, I do think this is a, a valuable position, and the incumbent who used to do it, who I would often see on Saturdays and Sundays, and beating the bushes, and cajoling the students to be there, which doesn't exist anymore. So I'll be interested to see how we go with this, because if, I think it's an important thing, and maybe if we, I'm on the board next year, it's something that we, we do suggest, or we as a board decide we want that position to be put in. But at this point, I, I can't support the motion. Anyone else? Mr. Mr. Panos?
Yeah, I, um, I too, you know, I, I'm willing to wait out this year and possibly next, you know, to see if there is a, a need, whether it can be handled here. And so, um, you know, I too will not support the, the motion. I hope you don't mind, Mr. Halleck, if you can take it. That's the big guy. All right. And so, I'm all set. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, you have a hand.
Oh, Dr. Hill?
So I just wanna add, um, I appreciate Mr. Halleck's proposal as well. But also, I need to understand, because we, we mentioned incumbent, again, I don't have to talk about names, but this board is also interested in growing our vocational programming. And one of the courses that we instituted last year on trial basis, and we're continuing, even with, you know, like, pretty small numbers, because we feel it's that important, is the fire course, right? And the person who was formerly in this, you know, community service role is left it, and they're interested in the fire course. And so at some point, we're gonna have to find money to pay for those folks continuously. So, it's, you know, it's not, I want the public to understand, it, it's not like money comes from everywhere, and things are everywhere. We want this, we have to pay for that. And we just have to keep that in mind. And as far as, uh, you know, addressing, you know, people being overworked and principal, like, most schools don't have that person. I have to tell you that. I know you don't know that, because it's not your field, but most people, school districts do not have that person. So that's something Windsor had. It was, it was nice to have for a while, you know, person left, we found the savings. And again, my objective with Ms. Bachelter and my leaders, was to bring this rollover budget, which was over six percent, down. So, I mean, that's, that's the reality. There're gonna be things, and I understand that we all like certain things more than others. But we also want our fire course. We want other courses, and there are people who are gonna, you know, be instructors in those courses, and we're gonna have to pay those people. And if it grows the way we would like it to grow, it's, it's gonna grow beyond this fifty-two thousand. I'm quite sure of that. But just keep that in mind before we get excited about saying, next year or the year after, because we might be coming to you next year, saying, we need this many instructors for a fire course. So, if you wanna give endless money, I will never, I've said many times, I wanna say to the public, I'm not gonna be the superintendent to say, I'll take all the money you wanna give. I have argued with Mr. Lockhart for three years. Because the reality is, I live in this town, and I pay taxes in this town, so we're not gonna get foolish with my money. So, I'm just gonna keep that clear.
Anyone else like to speak to the motion?
I think you might have.
Ms. Cantor? Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. Wallaston. I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Fury. I just wanted to comment, I know it's been a really tough year doing the budget, and I appreciate everybody's hard work and concern in all the different areas we're discussing. I know the community service coordinator is an important position, but I do feel we should respect the superintendent's thoughts about having someone else fill this role for now. I do think we should take a look and see what happens, how these people in these positions take care of the situation, to ensure that the kids have their correct requirements to graduate, and just revisit it next year. Thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Halleck, I think you've kind of heard the, um, the kind of sentiment and concerns based on, on this year's budget. I don't know if you wanna withdraw your motion?
I have, yes. Um, and, um, 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 disappointingly, but I do wanna withdraw the motion at this time.
Thank you. So, um.
A second here, we're also, yep.
Motion has been withdrawn. Is, we're back to the main motion? Which is to approve the four-point-eight-four percent budget that was presented by the superintendent. I believe it was seconded by Mr. Panos. So I'm gonna toss it back to Mr. Lockhart, if you'd like to start the discussion.
I'm not sure if you, I'm not sure if you wanna go back and forth, for people to have their comments.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
To go back and forth. So, start with Mr. Lockhart, and.
So the, the process was, um, it was over three, three Tuesday nights. I think that, um, Dr. Hill satisfied all of our questions in regards to the budget. I believe it was very spirited. It was definitely televised on WinTV. Just wanna thank everybody for participating in the process. I will, um, be voting, um, in support of this budget, but I, I must make sure that I keep raising their awareness that, um, we continually to woefully underfund major maintenance year over year. Um, we, we, we know that we have a lot of needs for pairs within our buildings. There's just needs within our buildings that I just think we, we should be funding. But I'm also understanding that, as a taxpayer in this town as well, um, I can only speak for my pockets and not for the pockets of others. With that being said, um, it's a responsible budget. It's a budget that was not a rollover budget. There was a lot of thought into it, and I do believe, overall, this entire board was actually impressed where we landed. Where, could it be a little lower, a little higher, based off of personal, um, experiences? Absolutely. But I think it's a budget that I believe that the town council can be very, um, happy for, and I believe it's a responsible budget to put before this, um, the citizens for adoption. So, I will be voting in support of this. I wanna thank everybody for, um, being very responsive and being active within this process.
Thank you. Mr. Panos, do you wanna go next?
Okay, um, uh, I'm, you know, I guess I will reluctantly support the, the, the budget. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, I think there was more that can be done. I think that, uh, what was done, I thought there was, there, it's a, um, you know, fairly well-done. But as you heard, you know, my comments before, I, um, didn't get everything I wanted here, so I expect something in return.
You got kisses. The chocolate kind, for the audience.
Kisses, yes. If, if it was full of.
I think we're taking the gift back. We'll see what we can, we're gonna melt it down, see what we can get for.
I, I think I could use some Headway IPA. That would be, that would. But, um, but, but I, I understand that this is, yeah, a serious organization, so we can't do that. So, uh, you know, I, as I said, I have certain reservations on this. I, um, I did review the, to some degree, the software that was, um, ten percent higher. And, um, the juicy ones were all blacked out. I guess those security ones, I guess that's why you're not putting them in. And, uh, but, uh, you know, i- it, it's a big item, but I, I think that, uh, next year, I think we should, I, take a look at that, you know, during the budget, um, you know, study season. And, you know, and I, you know, I will come back to items like this that I did, you know, as, I understand it sounds a little annoying to some, but, uh, this is part of the process, you know, we, we, we can't just add ancillary, uh, people, you know, this is, you know, you say, well, for example, a community service coordinator, um, and gives exactly the same argument that I gave for these other positions, you know? You say, well, it's a position can be done by someone else? Okay, here it is. You know, that's the same thing, as you look at it. And I wanna say that it is part of the board's function to be able to question these things. You should have, you should understand it. You don't just defer, you know, this is part of, this is part of our function. So, um, you know, much as it, much as it hurts, I guess I will support the munch, the, 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 uh, main motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I heard, um, I hear the sentiments of Mr. Panos. What I heard him say is that he would like to see this stuff in the future during the budget process. I would be in support of that, but, um, I would only be in support of that if it's in a, um, an executive session, um, during one of the, during one of the finance committee meetings.
You're referring to the software?
The software stuff.
Okay, some, yeah.
So as long as, if it's something that's hyper-sensitive, sensitive, I would not be in favor of it being done publicly, and I, I fully support executive session, so that can be fleshed out for the whole board.
Yes, the, um, most of the software, obviously, is not really that sensitive. I think that the obvious security one, but I'd like to, because we didn't, we didn't have to do this last year. This issue didn't come up last year. So I, I, you know, I'd appreciate, you know, a, a better understanding of what the issue is. I mean, other than saying, well, you have, the, you know, some security thing, I understand that that's a, can be a problem if that's advertised. I don't know, somebody can hack you better if they know who, who is supplying it or what, but, uh, but all those things are software that is used for, for, um, you know, for, you know, various educational purposes. I think we can get a grasp of that, and I don't think there's anything terribly sensitive about it, but, you know, if, I, I, I appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Clace?
I just wanna say that I'm gonna support the budget. I think it funds a school system that families want to send their children to, and it brings families to Windsor. I think it's fiscally responsible. It's not an easy budget. I don't think, I mean, there are some highs and lows for everybody, but I think it's a budget that we can bring to the town and is reasonable, considering the times that everybody is facing right now. I think it supports children through SEL and new, good, good curricula, and, uh, teachers and staff with resources, and seeing our contracts negotiate, newly negotiated, and I really appreciate the efforts and work of Dr. Hill and his staff, and even of the public, who's come here and given us their input and feedback all the time through this process, and even before, to help the superintendent make some informed choices. So, um, I think it's a great budget to move us forward and sustain Windsor as a viable and awesome school system. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Cantor? Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. Fury. I was just going to ask that, if we request something that we could receive it, um, for the budget in more than twenty-four hours, because this information for the software didn't come until about five o'clock last night, and we have a meeting tonight, so just asking that if you could send it out a little earlier. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. President?
Yes.
I will take responsibility for that. I hear you loud and clear. I made the request. As you know, it, you know, things happen. I believe the superintendent was sick for a while there, so, you know, just certain things you just can't control, but I just want the listening public to understand that, yes, you did get it last night, but there were certain things that was beyond our control to be able to get it to us faster, but your point is well-taken, as the finance chair.
Thank you.
Anybody else to the budget? Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, I'll, I'll echo Mr. Panos' sentiments and say, um, I'll reluctantly support this budget. But, uh, Dr. Hill, I, I am very pleased with your ability to please as many people as you can with this budget, um, because we're not gonna be able to please everyone. You were able to stay fiscally responsible, financially responsible, as, well, as financially responsible as we could with the number that you've given us. But I also still recognize our need, uh, for more, and, um, I, I'm taking after, uh, Dr. Dr. Lockhart over here. The Dr. Pepper can is confusing me. No, I'm just kidding. But I'm taking after him and just saying, I understand, we, we do, we do need a lot more, and, um, it's, it's probably gonna be my generation or the generation after that, that, that's gonna be the one that have to deal with it, if, if, um, if the issues aren't taken care of, or if we don't plan ahead for, uh, these issues. But I thank you for, for being very responsible and still planning, because I'm not saying that you're not planning. I'm, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, um, that we, we do need, we do need more there. We do need more. We cut back from our operating expense, but you did the best you could to, to get something that would be responsible, and please, people behind this table, be able to service our students, and hopefully be able to be voted on, um, by the council and, and, uh, passed on to the people of this town, who will hopefully accept it as well. So thank you for your hard work, as well as your team.
Anyone else? Ms. Taylor, then Mr. Halleck. Well, Mr. Halleck?
Um, thank you. I wanna definitely echo the sentiments of, uh, Mr. Mr. Panos and Mr. Wallaston. I'm definitely torn as well on this budget. Um, this is, this is, um, I've only been on the board for, for two terms, but this is probably the toughest, uh, budget vote that I've had. It's, it's, um, I feel, I feel there's some good in this budget, and there's some, some areas where we could do more, definitely. So, but, um, I'm saying that I think, um, I'm, I'm gonna go the other way on this budget and vote no.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, uh, Dr. Hill and your team. I know it's not easy to, um, to do what you do, and it's definitely not easy to do what we do, because everybody's watching, and everybody's, we can't go anywhere without somebody asking about this budget. And in the position that I am in the community, and speaking with other towns, and as, um, you know, President Fury and Vice President, um, Lockhart, we speak to other towns all the time, and everybody is coming in so much higher than us. We, for whatever reason, in Windsor, know how to, I don't know, get blood from a turnip, or whatever the, yeah, whatever it is. Yeah, it's very country. So, um, so I just know, yes, right? So I, I just know that, like, another, a lot of surrounding towns, it's way higher. I know that our quality of service, the level of education that our kiddos are getting, that my kiddos are getting in, in our schools. I also know that these are the same schools that have been here since the beginning of time, and I know all of a sudden, things will start to deteriorate. I know all of a sudden, things will start to, um, not make sense anymore. And so we just have to, I feel like we have to, as a town, think future-forward and not think about the right now. Oftentimes, it's real easy to slap a Band-Aid on something, but if the wound is bleeding out, you're gonna have to do something different. And I just think that, um, you know, everybody's talking about rainy day fund, well, it's raining. We went through a pandemic, and I think the SEL could have been beefed up more. I think, you know, um, our, our, our wages are okay, but. I think, you know, our, our wages are okay, but I would love to see more competitive wages, especially in the, the, you know, paraeducators and our substitute teachers and things like that. We want to keep people in our buildings. We want to keep staff happy. And when you're thinking about culture and climate of the, you know, of these kids, if the staff isn't happy, the kids won't be happy. So I just feel like I am going to support the budget, but I would love to see so much more. But it's just really almost a miracle to see something this low in the, in the times that we're living in, because I'm telling you, surrounding towns, it's double. So if anybody's, think I'm kidding, everybody else's Board of Education meetings are public as well, tune in, because 4.84, I can't believe it was done. I support it, but again, I would love to see more. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Cantor. Ms. Cantor.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. I just want to say, this was a very long drawn-out process for me studying the budget. I see a lot of areas that Dr. Hill did caught, and I appreciate that, because like I said, we're in a bad state here with the debt and everything and people suffering financially as well as mentally. I just want to say that the process is debating by all of us on the board, its factual opinions and experience. And as a licensed healthcare professional working in multiple specialty areas in this state of mental health, pulmonology, orthopedics, and cardiology, I will tell you, the best thing you can do is push yourself to a little step, baby step each day to get back to normal, because you have to move forward. And in order to grow, you have to do that to move forward. So I am in favor of this budget. I would have liked to see it a little bit lower, but I do think I can, I can at this time support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I guess I'm going to go last. I'm going to support the budget. I think Dr. Hill did an amazing job. He explained what the budget would look like if we just wanted to continue as we were. Would have been a 6.22% increase. We know, as others have spoken to, Mr. Lockhart and I were on a call recently with CAPE, and probably three-quarters of the people on that call had budgets much larger than this. And it wasn't everybody. It's a, it's a chair call, and people can, can call in if they, if they have the ability to do that. But, you know, we were, we were looking very good. I said, we haven't approved it yet. It's only what's been proposed, though, but, and, you know, we've gone through the process, and I think the, the PowerPoint that Dr. Hill had explained everything very well. The biggest costs we have really are our staff and the contractual obligations. Those are signed contracts with all of our union bargaining unit employees. We've seen, as, as we know, our own utility bills are going up. We see that in this budget as well. We see insurance costs going up, and Ms. Batchelor's done a great job in the last few years of keeping the insurance costs down, but eventually, I guess we had to pay the piper. Special education, we looked at it even during tonight's discussion on, on the financial report, and Ms. Batchelor's been telling us as the year has gone on that it was, you know, we were going to be eventually breaking out of the budget and have to eventually switch monies around, because we have an obligation when students come in and have certain needs. We can't say, no, we're not, we're not going to send you to that specialized school if that's what you really need. And cuts were made, cuts to staffing were made, and we're still a district, where two-thirds of the districts are still going down with their populations and schools. We're still kind of holding our own or slightly, we're looking to a slight increase for next year in the number of students we have. As I mentioned previously at one of the finance committees, many of the budgets were held to zero increase. And something like major maintenance, if you have a zero increase, you know, if you go down to find out what plywood costs right now and other expenses at, at a hardware store, so the amount we have in major maintenance is not going to get the bang that we had the year before. It's just the way it's going to be. And, but those were tough decisions, and I support this budget, and I, because I, I'm also going to hold the superintendent, or we're all going to hold the superintendent responsible. He said, this is the budget to move this, continue to move this district forward, and I believe that's the case, and I'm happy to support it. At this point, without further ado, I'd like to call the question here. So all those in favor of supporting the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Sorry.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Abstentions? Motion carries eight, seven to one. What? She had to step out. Six to one. Ms. Taylor. Ms. Taylor, someone's calling her, she had to step out. We're going to seven C now. We're going to go back to, we had switched the items up, so what used to be seven C is now seven D. Discussion on House Bill 5003, an Act Concerning Education Funding in Connecticut. Is there a motion?
Will the Board of Education approve it? Approve a letter endorsing House Bill 5003, an Act Concerning Education Funding in Connecticut?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. And Mr. Lockhart, would you like to?
Yes.
Start the discussion.
So I've been, I've been testifying at the State Capitol in regards to House Bill 5003, in regards to the state of Connecticut actually starting to do its job as far as educational funding. So what I, there's other school districts in the state of Connecticut that have been lobbying and putting pressure on the CGA, which is Connecticut General Assembly, to make sure that they actually start fully funding their share of education within the state of Connecticut. I brought the idea up to the executive committee to see if we can come together as a board to write a joint, sign a joint letter with all members of the Boards of Education affix in their signature to it, stating that we support in principle fully funding public education in the state of Connecticut where it benefits all schoolchildren and all school districts in the state of Connecticut. So the letter reads that the Windsor Board of Education recognized the immense challenges legislators face and represented a diverse set of stakeholders with varied interests. We intentionally identify legislation that will benefit school districts in rural, suburban and urban communities. Windsor is part of the Connecticut solution, demonstrating on an annual basis that nine Board of Ed members of different political parties are able to work together to develop a legislative platform for your consideration. Windsor Board of Education, as the latest letter stated now, and being very, very assumptive, unanimously approved this letter outlining our 2023 legislative priority. Under House Bill 5003, an Act Concerning Education Funding in Connecticut, for decades, Connecticut educated funding system has had an overreliance on property tax and resident, resident income. That has had a direct impact on local meal rates across Connecticut. Adding to the further economic strain, local school districts pay an increasing percentage of annual tuition to important school programs of choice, i.e. magnet, agriculture, agri-science, et cetera. To supplement this funding, the state utilizes the education cost sharing, which is commonly known as ECS grant, first developed in 1990. ECS is currently undergoing formula adjustment to better align with the student needs of Windsor and many other urban, suburban, and rural school districts across the state. This is beneficial to most school districts. However, this adjustment is not transformative, because it maintains the current disjointed and inequitable funding system. House Bill 5003, an Act Concerning Education Funding in Connecticut, streamlines the funding system by simplifying it, aligning monies to student need, and supporting school districts and municipalities to better project, to better project future spending, project future spending. More specifically, House Bill 5003 does the following. It accelerates the education cost sharing grant adjustments by several years, fully funding the grant by fiscal year 2025. It expands weighted funding to students attending public schools of choice, whether magnet, charter, agri-science, or open choice programs. It eliminates general education tuition billing for magnet school operations and agri-science programs effective fiscal year 2025. It maintains the current schedule for towns receiving reductions in their ECS grants, and many of those districts will not, will see a net increase from the elimination of the tuition and increased state aid for school choice programs. Because the fiscal year 2025 targeted in House Bill 5003 is strategic in that it anticipates a fiscal cliff for many school districts, not Windsor, who utilize the American Rescue Plan, commonly known as ARP, and the elementary and secondary school emergency, emergency relief, known as ESER, funding for vital staffing due to the significant increase in student mental health needs post-pandemic. Connecticut received $1.1 billion in ARP ESER funds, with a 71% of the school districts using approximately $400 million for staffing. Those funds are no longer available after September 2024. In fiscal year 2025, with the passage of House Bill 5003, Windsor Public Schools gained approximately $583,000 based upon revenues increases and tuition savings. And we have a link here for the, for people to look, the link and check to see the calculations, not only for Windsor, but all the other towns. The current state budget projections show room for approximately $900 million under the current spending cap. With an estimated cost of $275 million, House Bill 5003 is a major step in the right direction for streamlining and stabilizing Connecticut's school funding system and correcting the state's overreliance on property taxes. It ends with saying that if you have any questions, comments, concerns, do not hesitate to contact our superintendent, Dr. Hill, or any of the board members that will be affix in their signature on this letter. And it has at the end, "Sincerely," and it has a spot for all nine board members to be able, with their name and their title, and be able to fix their signature. With that being said, this, this is a great step in, in the direction for the state of Connecticut to actually start doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is fully funding public education. Also, this provides the foundation, once this is established, to then take, take and flip the page and use the same people that are actually worked hard to put this together in a bipartisan way, to then start looking at the funding for, for special education. So it doesn't make sense to try to attack special education if you don't have the basic funding formula of just regular education and the way monies are moving from the state through the towns and through the, through the school districts. So this is definitely a step in the right direction. There's about eight towns that this currently does not help, because some towns are getting more money than they're supposed to. But this is a, this is a plan that helps every single school district at the end of the day to make sure that it doesn't matter what your status is, you will all get the piece of the pie that you're supposed to be getting instead of always giving, 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 and nothing being received back. So this is a great step in the right direction. I'm open to any questions. I'm sure the superintendent's open to any perspectives as well. But I believe that on the town of Windsor, we stand to gain with this legislation, especially with the students that go to the crack magnet schools, students that go to the agricultural programs, whether it's Glastonbury or Suffield. It takes, it removes the adversarial relationship between the two entities to make sure that we now have great opportunities for all of our students, and it's not in an adversarial way where, so who's going to pay for the funding, who's going to do this, who's going to do that. It's actually going to be a fully funded program on both sides of the aisle, and it gives, it gives families a chance to be able to send their child wherever they wish to do so, with the state taking on full responsibility. So I, I am urging all board members to fully support this and to consent, to continue our advocacy at the State Capitol through our two state House representatives and our two state senators.
Anyone else like to speak on this or have any questions for Mr. Lockhart? Ms. Clace.
I just want to thank Mr. Lockhart for all his work in, in working on this and informing us about it, and I just, I'd be happy to sign, but thank you very much, Leonard.
Mr. Panos?
Just making sure that it's clear to everyone, bullet items two and three here expands the weighted funding to students attending public schools of choice. Now, we went through it, just, I'm just trying to understand what, could you explain that weighted funding issue again to me?
So weighted funding is basically looking at your, a different bunch of things goes into the formula, but at the end of the day, what was supposed to happen is, is that, for example, all the RESCs are going to receive the appropriate amount of funding that they are supposed to receive from, for a particular child going to their program. Instead of that RESC running a negative and not being able to backcharge it back to a school district, it's not fair to the rest to run a deficit, and it's not fair to the rest to expect the district to pay the full amount of tuition, because we have operations we have to run on our side of the house as well.
Okay. And the RESC is like, crack?
Correct.
Yes, I had to say RESC. Eliminates general education tuition billing for magnet school operators and agri-science programs. That's in addition to the RESCs, right?
Yeah, so for example, if we have a child that goes to an agricultural program, say Glastonbury, and it's a half-day program, currently those children have an opportunity to stay there for a full day. But at the same time, Windsor will be responsible for paying for that full cost of that student being educated there for a full day. And what the state is supposed to do in that situation is that the state will then directly bill it directly, pay directly to, to the school that we send the child to, and it removes that adversarial relationship between the two districts.
Right. Right now, for example, if Glastonbury charges $11,000 tuition as, for us, we have to pay that or half of it or something like this, and so the, the state, it's more convenient for the student to stay there all day rather than to go half-day there for agriculture or partly and then come, you know.
And if the school district doesn't pay it, then if Glastonbury can say, no, we don't want your student, or they just run the deficit.
Right.
Which is not fair to them either. Thus, it creates the adversarial relationship.
Right. Now, the acceleration of the education cost sharing, was it intended that they were going to be fully funding the educational cost sharing sometime?
Yeah, in 2027. But we're looking at the fiscal cliff of the ESER funds. That's why it's being accelerated.
That's why we're asking for it.
That's why we're asking for it.
Now that they have a few bucks.
If we don't accelerate it, we're going to have every school district in the state of Connecticut. Once that ESER fund is stopped, all the funds that they were funding through the grant, you either going to absorb it through your, through your town budget, or you're just going to truncate those services altogether.
Okay. I think we understand it. Thank you.
Anyone else? I know I will sign. And thank you for, also, thank you for doing the work that you've done and speaking at the legislature, also with your, your CAPE hat on too, because I know you've taught us about how we are representatives of, of the state of Connecticut, not just of Windsor. So we have a motion that's been seconded, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Abstention? Motion carries eight, zero, zero. Thank you. Thank you.
I do have the letter here. I will give it to Mr. President. He can be the first one to sign it, and then before the meeting, please just make sure you sign it. Ms. Cantor, I know you're, you're not here. We won't send this letter in until you and Ms. Galinsky are able to put your signature on it, and then David, I'm sorry, Mr. President can then send it off through the superintendent's office.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to comment, so I don't want to get anybody's attention.
Yeah, above.
So I'm thinking like maybe next week is up on?
That's, it's when you're healthy.
Next item of business is the school liaison reports, and I know because this was going to be a long meeting, I'm asking that, for representatives, just to try to be brief in your comments, if at all, starting with Windsor High School. Ms. Taylor or Mr. Wallaston? Ms. Taylor.
I, I'm not going to share anything new.
Mr. Wallaston?
Yes, no report today.
Sage Park, first Mr. Halleck, if he's got anything, and then Ms. Clace.
Yes, thank you. Tonight was the Windsor Sports Awards Ceremony, so congratulations to, to all the students who received the awards. March 7th is Teacher Professional Development Day. It will be in early There will be early dismissal. March 22nd to the 24th, there are parent, uh, teacher conferences. Uh, this Friday, February 24th, there is going to be, be a Black History Assembly at Sage Park. In a, in a reminder, um, students and, and their parents, uh, the school store is open, and students can use their, their PBIS points, um, that they've been earning since, since the beginning of the school year, uh, to buy items there, and that's all I have for my report tonight.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Halleck on his report? Okay, the next is Clover Street School?
Nothing. I just hope, um, Dr. Hill speaks about the readathon at the Clover Street. I yield to him on that.
Thank you. Uh, Kennedy School, Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. Um, you saw my hot topic before, I believe it was you. Um, I just want to say congratulations to Emma Herdewi, it's Hadari, I guess, but she's a third grade student at JFK, and she was the winner of the summary that she wrote the speech. She was, um, presented, I believe, an award regarding Dr. Martin Luther King for her, I have his name, speech, so it was represented by the state, and Senator Murphy was there, and I believe Senator, Representative DeRoe and Dr. Hill were there.
Anything for Ms. Cantor? Okay, Oliver Ellsworth, I don't know if you have any report from Julene or?
No, I don't. Sorry.
Paquonic School, Mr. Panos?
Okay, I'll just mention that, of course, Black History Month, uh, Assembly on Friday is coming. Uh, we'll be, they'll be performing with the gospel choir will be there, Windsor High School Band and Paquonic students, um, will be performing one o'clock. Just, uh, one other, he mentioned that, um, they're enjoying, they, they very much appreciate the Windsor High School students going there and, and, um, and tutoring the students in the STEM or the math and literacy, they're both enjoying it. Thank you, that's it.
Anything for Mr. Panos in Paquonic School? Next item is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd first like to, again, congratulate Mr. Panos for his years of service. Twenty-plus years, right? That's twenty-two.
We're going to cut his salary, Bill. That's how we reduce it. Reduce the budget.
Reduce it.
That's, uh, in all seriousness, you know, 20-plus years in public service, um, for free. It's, that's, that's a testament to, you know, someone being committed to something. It's, it's hard to get folks these days to commit to much of anything. We heard our president say, you know, longstanding organizations, international organizations, in fact, have basically gone defunct here in the community because they're made up of volunteers and people who have just chosen not to be committed. And I, I always admire that. Anybody, you know, every year, what our service recognition awards is a big deal to me. When people stick to something, I just find that that's something that we, we are losing a bit in our society. Folks kind of get in something, if they're not getting something from it right away, they're out and they're gone. So thank you for your 22 years, and feel free, if you don't want to do anymore, you You've done enough.
Such a great heart.
Shows how much she cares, she cares about you.
That's it.
I should have voted no with that. You see what happens?
The SEL, Mr. Panos. This is SEL, this is your self-care.
Canes can do SEL, there's enough staff at home.
Looking out for your self-care. Um, so, and again, I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Gill, Gianna Gill, our communications coordinator. It's just, you know, for her work in the website, and, uh, as I said, um, no matter where I travel around the state and conferences around the country, folks comment on our social media presence and our website, and I'm just proud, and, you know, when I brought her on, I just said, hey, make us look good. And, you know, she's doing the work and she's excited about the work. Beginning March 1st, I know a lot of folks will be excited in the community, March 1st, 2023, additional funding will allow the Windsor Public Schools operating the National School Lunch and the National School Breakfast Programs to offer meals at no cost to students for the remainder of the school year, 2022, 2023. Windsor Public Schools will be offering one free breakfast and one free lunch meal per school day to all students. I already said, let's start off with that. March 1st, 2023. You ain't listening. For Ms. Batchelder, it's March 1st, 2023. Tomorrow evening, February 23rd, the Windsor High School Choral Department will hold the Rhythm of the Night Choral Concert at 7:00 PM in the Windsor High School Auditorium. As always, this is going to be another outstanding example of the talent we have at Windsor High School. As was stated by our, our board member, Ms. Cantor, Senator Chris Murphy paid a visit to John F. Kennedy School on January 27th to acknowledge, uh, our student, grade-three student, excuse me, Emma Hadari. She was one of the first congressional district winners. Her essay may be found on the district website. I thought it was a very powerful essay, and I gotta say, as superintendent, I was extremely proud that, you know, one of our students in a third grader, no less, you know, won this essay contest. When you think about how many people enter these contests, and then to have the sen, the senator come and, and honor her for her work, it was just amazing. Please tune into my weekly podcast, Chat and Chill with Super Hill. The podcasts are listed on the district website. There was a gap, I will tell the public, because I hear from folks who actually are, um, so there was a gap because I was ill, so I couldn't record while I was homesick, but, uh, I doubled up, so you'll have a couple coming real soon, and we'll be back on our pattern of putting them out there. Uh, my next coffee talk, I think this is really important. My next coffee talk will be held on Tuesday, February 28th, at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom at LP Wilson. A specific topic that I will address will be the incidences of, we've had a couple of incidences at different schools across the district with, uh, little people bringing a knife. Um, I want to be real clear, because I know there's so much conversation on social media, and as I've said since day one, October 2020, I will not engage in the social media banter. If we are looking to constantly move this district forward positively, and as superintendent, I'm going to move it forward factually. So if you would like to know facts, and as much as we can share them, I invite you to come out to our coffee talk, you know, to hear the facts. Um, I understand people, some people choose to go back and forth on the social media. I just want to continue to say publicly, I will not join in that, and, um, I know for a fact, people don't know all that they think they know, so if you want to know the facts, come to the coffee talk. That will be specifically discussed, um, at that time. And also, last Friday on, excuse me, February 17th, we, there was the National African-American Read-In Day, and, um, myself along with some of my fraternity brothers from Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, and Vice President Lockhart, and a couple of his brothers from his Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. Did I say it correctly, sir? I just wanted to make sure, and we had representation from the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, and also the Kappa Alpha Psi Fraternity Incorporated. So these are, um, all but one, and I apologize, uh, all but one of the historically black fraternities that came out to Clover Street School to read to students. It was very well-received. Principal Lee and our coach, Ms. Laura Wilson, did an outstanding job. They put out a nice breakfast, um, they organized things very well, so all of the participants got to go into classrooms and read to the students. Um, I heard nothing but good reports. We also had, um, the local news that came out and did some interviews, and I got to see the story, and you all, it's on our social media as well, and Ms. Gill took some nice pictures, so it was a, it was a great event. And all the, um, men that were involved, they were very excited. Um, they, they hung around and they just kept talking about, this is so much fun, and I always enjoy seeing men come into a school anyway, um, particularly men of color, you know, coming to school, it's like, we, we hear so much, and I'm always one who is out to break any kind of stereotype and any kind of belief. So to kids to see all these men come in, and it was a Friday, so I was kind of shocked to see so many men in their suits. I thought I was supposed to dress down a little bit, and they came in dressed up, and say, well, we're coming to a school, so they all had on suits, so I felt a little underdressed, but the kids enjoyed it, they enjoyed the reading. Um, we read all the books, were books by, um, around African-Americans, various characters in history, and it was just, it was really a nice day, and those are the kind of days that you look forward to, being in education and being in schools. So I know already, um, JFK would not be outdone, so they've already reached out to see if we can have some more men come and read at JFK, and so I got a feeling we're going to be getting a lot of reading invitations, so get your voices and clean your glasses, guys. We're, we're going to some other schools. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Dr. Hill on his report? Ms., Ms. Cantor? Ms. Cantor?
Thank you. I just had to get my mic off mute. So, um, thank you. Um, I just wanted to request one thing. On January 23rd, um, it was an early, not an early dismissal, after-school activities were canceled for, and the evening ones as well. So, um, the email came out at 2:58, and the high school dismisses about 2:20, and the boys swim team was already practicing, so the JV swam, and we got the notification after. And then I was asking that we could have it before the school dismisses, so we know what's going on. The other thing is going to go, roll over to Ms. Batchelder. Now, the buses, the late buses were supposed to be there. They're in the bus, A, B, C, D, and F. B through F showed up somewhere between 4:00 and 4:30. Bus A didn't show up as of 5:20. There were four students still waiting at the high school as of 5:20 PM for that, so you should be aware. I understand that Dacco does not call for late buses, but some type of notification should have been made that Bus A was not coming at a reasonable time, because that's not reasonable, 5:20, no one's there. So I picked up my son at 5:20, and there were three students still waiting there at the high school in the auditorium, for Bus A.
Do you want to address this?
Yes, yes. So, Ms. Cantor, you are correct about the, um, the calling off of the afternoon events at the high school in January, so I will apologize to you and to the community. I made that call. Um, I was actually not in, um, district at that hour, and I wasn't aware what the weather was doing exactly at that time. I didn't expect it to really pick up, but it, it had that funny pickup at a late time, so I made the decision to call the afternoon events, and, um, I, I will just say, you're not the first person I've heard from. I actually caught it as soon as I got home that night. So, like, what person made that dumb call to call it so late? And I was like, that was your husband. He made that call, honey. So I have heard about my late call, but I can't win them all with the weather, and I apologize. I do my best to call, um, you know, the school cancellations, delays, or any kind of change as soon as I can, um, but just watching the weather, it just happened. So that being said, folks be on alert. I have a 4:00 AM call, I'm sure that I will have tomorrow morning, to figure out what we're going to do about, um, school issue with, uh, this current situation with the weather tonight. And, Ms. Batchelder, did you want to address anything with the buses, or there's nothing to say? Okay, and thank you for the information for the buses.
You're welcome. Thank you. I just, I don't really have a problem with it because my son can call, don't want us to be able to pick him up. It's not like the old days where the rest of the kids could, you know, pile in your car and you drive them home because of what goes on today. I just felt sad that those other three kids were waiting there for a call.
Thank you. Committees' reports, I don't think there's any other reports of committees. Uh, next Board of Education meeting is Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the boardroom here. Next item is audience-to-visitor. Anyone, uh, online, Alexis? I'll start that first. I want to read your script, unless there's nobody online.
Mr. President, there is a question in the queue.
If you could read your script, then, thank you.
Perfect. Good evening, this is Alexis Shaq from the superintendent's office. If there is anyone from the public who would like to address the board, you may do so in two different ways. If you are using the Zoom application on your mobile device or computer, you may enter your comments into the Q and A feature located at the bottom of the Zoom menu bar, or you may raise your hand on your computer, if your device has a microphone, by selecting the Participants icon on the Zoom menu bar, and then clicking Raise Hand, or by dialing star nine on your phone. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address. When you are called on, you will be promoted to panelist. After you make your comments, you will return to attendee status. For clear communication, we ask that you do not place the call on speakerphone. No comments can be made against the employees of the school district or children outside of your own.
Thank you, and, uh, just as we had said earlier, at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, for people who can see Mr. Lockhart, he'll raise his hand at the two-and-a-half-minute mark to start winding up, and then hold the card up, uh, telling you, um, it's time to wind down your remarks. Uh, if you're on, uh, the phone, uh, Mr. Lockhart will, will, uh, interrupt you at the three-minute mark to let you know to, to wind up your remarks. And just to let people know, this is an opportunity to speak to the board. Um, if there is a question someone has, it's a good chance it won't be answered here, and, uh, it could be something that the, um, the superintendent's office may get back to you on, but, um, you said there's a question, um, in the queue?
Yes, I will read the question now. The question is, who will be overseeing the hours of community service? Will there be an administrative assistant accepting hours, as has been rumored to be happening thus far? Who is following up on the locations of community service to make sure students have actually showed up?
Thank you. Is there, is there a name associated with that? We usually ask them to speak to?
It says anonymous attendee.
Thank you. Uh, anyone in, is there, is that the only item in the queue?
Yes, that is the only question in the queue.
Anybody in the boardroom who'd like to address the board?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry to keep you for just an extra couple of minutes, but, uh, just had a couple thoughts as I'm listening tonight, and then, again, my normal push for a little bit more of career and technology education. Um, you know, I know you have a budget, and I know there are constraints. Um, one of the things that I know, uh, like Mr. Panos brought up, for example, when we're looking at some of these fairly ancillary things, um, small fees and et cetera, these are things that if we didn't spend them on CAE or other things, they could actually be going into positions or other resources that are far more directly related to students, um, even if that's technology, equipment, other sort of things that we could, that we could utilize. So if we are going to spend the money anyways, I think I'd rather see it in something that's a little bit more directed to students. Um, if it's something to, like, our student representative with a music program, is there something that we can get that's music-related? Uh, is there something that can actually help inspire and motivate the student in the classroom more hands-on than letting the superintendent have a membership? However it may be important to him, it's something that we're here for the students, not for the superintendent, no offense, Dr. Hill. The other thing, when we are looking at these as, as a taxpayer in the community, um, the average, well, average median is $6,000 to $8,000 in terms of property tax. So even if we think that something like Mr. Panos's $16,000 is relatively minor, that's a couple people or property owners who didn't even have to pay tax for that year. Um, so there is some of that consideration balancing the needs inside of the community as well. Overall, in terms of budget, I mean, I don't think things were wildly unfair. I, you know, I could agree with Ms. Clase in many regards, that I would have different priorities for staffing and other things. Obviously, CTE, uh, are, are things that I'd rather see expenditure. My last thing in, in, in what to me was, was rather disturbing, uh, to hear from one of the board members tonight, and that'd be Mr. Walliston, was the idea of staying in your lane. A, a, as a, as a member of this board, you are here to have oversight over the administration to say, I'm just going to fail and fall to them because that's not my lane, it's his. I don't know, I, I, I don't think that's the role of any Board of Education member. One of your roles and the one that the rest of you all do fairly well is actually questioned to varying degrees, and I may disagree with you on policy, but to say, I'm just going to leave the decision. to leave the decision to him. I can't support that, and I actually think that's quite shameful, but that's just in my opinion. I know I can be very different with that. Sorry to take extra time, keep us all here a little bit later, but have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any interest of people would like to say anything else as to announcements? Oh, Ms. Taylor?
Happy Black History Month. Even though Black History is every day for me and this nation, it's, February is our time to pause and celebrate all the achievements, how far we've come, and in this district, we definitely know how to celebrate. I attended Windsor High School's celebration, and there's so many things going on throughout the community. I plan to be at the Historical Society on Saturday for their event, I believe it's 1 to 5. Got a busy Saturday, but I'm still going to stop by because it's so much going on in the town of Windsor, celebrating the achievements of Black people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Lockhart?
Yes, I echo the sentiments of Ms. Taylor, but I definitely want to, we would be remiss, as you know, that former President Jimmy Carter is within his last days. And from an educational standpoint, if my history serves me correctly, I believe the Department of Education was founded under his administration, and he was definitely, even though he was a one-term president, but he was definitely a president that really stood out for public education and really, really tried to bring some reforms and some discussions to that area. Lot of partisanship that went into that, but at the end of the day, he had public education at his heart and at its core. And it's still going on today, and there's been some efforts from time to time to abolish the department. But overall, Mr. President, thank you for all that you've done, give you your flowers while you're still here with us, and may God be with you and your family as you prepare to go on to the next chapter of your, of your life and beyond. So, thank you for everything you've done for public education.
Anyone else? Got an announcement. Mr. Halleck?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Paul on 20 years. Paul, you've been a great mentor to me and many others on the board, so I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Walliston?
Yes, I agree. Congratulations are definitely due, Mr. Panos, Ms. Gill, Tristan. I also will be with Ayana and say, Happy Black History Month, and our next meeting will be in the middle of Women's History Month, so hopefully we can do something for some of the special ladies we have serving on this side and on that side over there as well, as you guys are all phenomenal women. Yeah.
We're going to have to add that to this year's budget? Or have to switch a line item there, Mr. Panos?
We'll take it out of Mr. Panos's line.
We're going to take it out of Mr. Panos's salary. Ms. Cantor?
Thank you, Ms. Cantor. I just wanted to make a comment. Up at Bradley Field, there's an air museum, and this month, there is fighters from World War II, the actual fighter plane jets, that the Tuskegee Airmen flew during World War II. And I don't know if everybody knows their history with the World War II Tuskegee Airmen. They're the fighter pilots that protected our bombers over in Europe during World War II. So it's a great opportunity for those to go over and check it out and see what these brave, black men flew to protect our white bomber pilots. So, if you get a chance, go over there and look. Thank you.
Never lost one.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just want to say thank you to all the hard work by the administration, by the Board of Education, to ask those kind of tough questions throughout the process, getting answers and supplemental, didn't have the answer right then, to get that information to us so that we could be in a position that we were in, having the knowledge to, to look at the budget and adopt it here tonight. So with that said, I'm looking for one more motion.
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Lockhart, seconded by Mr. Panos. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstention. Motion carries eight zero zero. We are...